Good morning, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order if you'd stay standing for a moment of silent reflection, please. Mr. Hutton, would you do role call, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the County Council. councillor Duncaster.
Present.
councillor Dwyer.
Here.
councillor Remus.
Present.
councillor Farr.
Present.
councillor Keller.
Here.
councillor Kingsbury.
Present.
councillor Love.
Present.
councillor McKay.
councillor Miller.
warden Murphy.
Here.
councillor Beckett.
Present.
councillor Reed.
Present.
councillor Rheinwald.
Present.
councillor Robinson.
Present.
councillor Stack.
Here.
councillor Sweet.
Present.
councillor Visselke, Laura.
Here.
thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing nothing, can I get an adoption of the minutes of the meeting held on November 29th of 2017 and December 12th of 2017? councillor Love, second by councillor Visselke, Laura. Any errors or omissions? councillor Dwyer.
Yeah, I think there was, I had a written note, it was just a bunch of people on black. I believe in the wardens' office, it said in the month of February, these are the things that I did. The minutes I've written, I'm pretty sure it's probably supposed to go out.
Oh, you're probably, yeah, you're probably right. I missed that.
I'm sure everybody must have just skipped over that.
Thank you. I think that we can have a friendly amendment, just some housekeeping there. All those in favor?
It's not even friendly.
Don't poke the bear. Do you want to do a friendly amendment to the friendly amendment? councillor Remus?
Just not good at that.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Thank you.
That's funny.
As we gather in chambers this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting today on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. Members of county council, during the month of January, I attended 16 meetings on county business. On January 11th and 12th, 2018, I attended along with CAO Jim Hutton, the inaugural meeting of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. The caucus elected warden Robin Jones of the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville as the 2018 chair. And I'm proud to say I was acclaimed as the 2018 vice chair. The two priorities for the caucus for 2018 are building the Eastern Ontario Regional Network Cellular and Public Safety Broadband Network and implementing the Eastern Ontario Economic Development Strategy. On January 17th, 2018, I attended the annual general meeting of the Upper Ottawa Valley Chamber of Commerce and spoke to the members on our vision for the county of Renfrew. From January 21st to 23rd, I attended the Roma Conference held in Toronto, this is Kingston, as part of the conference meetings of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus were held. As part of the conference meetings of the, sorry, a multi-ministerial meeting was held as well as a meeting with the PC Caucus and the NDP Caucus to discuss the Eastern Ontario Regional Network Cellular and Public Safety Broadband Network. Premier Wynn attended the multi-ministerial meeting. A meeting was held also with the Honorable Eric Hoskins, Minister of Health and Long-Term Care, regarding the Land Ambulance Act and the need for better dispatch systems and how implementing a cellular and public safety broadband network would save taxpayers money in developing a new dispatch system. A meeting was also held with the Honorable Stephen Valduka, now Minister of Economic Development and Growth, to discuss the Eastern Ontario Leadership Council's recommendation on implementation of an Eastern Ontario Economic Development Strategy. On your desk today is a document entitled ER 2018 Provincial Election Priorities for your information. During the month of January, I also continued to take information set up events with COCHCO. This month's topics were the priorities for the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and the opening of the sections of the Algonquin Trail. I will remind those assembled here of following: the county of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. And at this time, I'll ask Mr. Hutton if you'd like to introduce our one delegation. You will see originally with three, we are only doing the as a delegation. Mr. Hutton, if you would.
Thank you, Chair and members of the county council. We have Chris Kingsbury, our Chair of the Ottawa Valley Tourism Association with us this morning. Chris has a number of followers at the back and perhaps Chris, perhaps Chris could introduce his delegation here. Thank you, Chris.
He's an entourage.
You know what, I can introduce them one by one, but the people in this room don't already know these people. Shame on you. Yeah, sorry, I'm sure it's fair to terms anyways. Alistair, my wife Val, Melissa, Nicole, Lauren and Helen. The exception of Val, these are all full ETA staff and of course the exception of Nicole, who is our Executive Director of the Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization.
For the record, Chris, I knew everybody but your wife.
Okay, good.
They don't know Val. Everyone knows Val.
So are you gonna, are you gonna bring Melissa with me or Melissa's bringing me with her in this presentation? Let's call it a collaboration. How much time do we have?
Five minutes.
I'll talk quick. Warden, Mayor's Reeves, members of the press, friends and neighbors, citizens of the Ottawa Valley. I think that about covers everyone. What a pleasure it is to be in front of you again, talking about a passion of mine. And of course, a passion for many others, and that is tourism. You all know tourism and its importance to our identity by the fact that every municipality in our county is a member of the OVTA. Tourism is the fun first cousin of economic development. Tourism is the brother and sister of culture and together they connect our people that tell our stories. And these stories are about the activities, the celebrations, the heartaches and the work we all do connected to our geology. And that geology has given us Ottawa Valley folks a character that has been passed on to us that we are now responsible to pass on to the generations that come after us. We are all storytellers. We tell stories to teach, we tell stories to discipline, we tell stories to console and to counsel. And doggone it, we tell stories because they entertain us. Now more than ever, we have opportunities to tell them and get those stories out there. We have emails and Twitter and Facebook and Instagram and Pinterest and LinkedIn. And us old schoolers still have telephones, but they're cell telephones. Thanks to partnerships with players like our Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization, our regional tourism organization and other direct marketing organizations, we implement programs and integrate shared ideas to help share our stories. The Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization Come Wander program allows us to connect partnerships with other DMOs who share similar stories. These initiatives include our Ride the Highlands Motorcycle Program, our Recrology Initiative, or the Stories of Our Earth, and throw a bunch of folks on bicycles into this mix. We in the Ottawa Valley have seen visitation increase as a result of being in that cool, what I like to call a triangle that goes from Algonquin Park to Hastings County to Lander County, to Land O' Lakes, to Rieda Lakes, to Ottawa. Yes, we get to tell stories. However, as my grandmother would tell us kids, we have to be careful because as a result of our actions, we can also be the topic of those stories. She would say, "Time will heal all wounds, however, time will also act to demonize the characters in those stories of poor choices and will also romanticize the characters in those nice stories." We call it our history. Grandma would say, "Mind your Ps and Qs," whatever that meant. She would also tell us to tell the stories we most want to be like. Now it gives us a chance to talk to you about the tools that we use to tell our stories and how we get those stories out to the audiences that will want to come here and share in the cool stuff we get to do every day. So just before we start, I want to encourage you to pay attention because there are a lot of photos in this presentation and some of them are your friends and neighbors and taxpayers. And it's, wouldn't it be nice to tell some of your neighbors that you saw them in a presentation? Like my father used to say, "It's nice to see your photo someplace other than the post office wall." Do younger folks in the room understand what that means? Anyways. First of all, let's talk about some numbers. Ontario gets 141,900,000 people come to visit us every year. That amounts to well over $25 billion. Our Ontario Highlands will see over 5 million visitors and that comes to 585 million. And here in Renfrew County, we see 1,588,000 folks come to see us. That amounts to over $165 million being injected into our economy. Our Ottawa Valley Tourist Association, we consist of 229 members, 197 regular members, five special events members, four artisans, allied members 19, and different clubs for. As I mentioned, we have a lot of pictures in our presentation. This is our AGM last year at Spectacle Lake Lodge. And you can see as Chair of the Board, I sometimes have to be a disciplinarian. You see me giving a stern look to Alistair Baird, who's once again acting up. So our year in review as far as membership goes, folks. We did a membership survey, what was pretty cool and I think people in the room are involved in surveying. We had a 43% response rate. That's pretty darn good. And the survey provided very good information. People talked about the value they place on different OVTA benefits. They talked about the challenges faced by our membership and they had input about how we can continue to support them. So that 217 year in review and our membership review, a lot of people thought that the benefit to their businesses and their organizations through the OVTA was about marketing. And you can see a lot of it was about networking, collaborating, professional development, and of course, the member-to-member benefits program where people give incentives for each other to know about their products. Got some pretty good feedback. This is cool. Joining an organization like the OVTA is a good way to maximize your limited marketing dollars and that's what a lot of us are faced with these days. And to network with successful tourism entrepreneurs. Now getting our stories out there, what kind of stuff are we up to? We go to trade shows, we go to Toronto, we go to the motorcycle show there, the Outdoor Adventure Show, which the OVTA and myself will be participating in at the end of February. The International Snowmobile Show, the ATV and power sports shows. In Ottawa, we go to the Outdoor and Adventure Travel Show. And in Renfrew County, we go to the Valley Gun and Sportsman Show and Hembrick Downtown Connect. And that's what we have done in 2017. We are involved in the travel trade initiative through Ontario's Highlands. I am one of seven tourism operators in the Ottawa Valley that belong to this partnership. It's a cooperative partnership and we work in coordination with our neighboring DMOs to create a brand, not just for the Ottawa Valley and Renfrew County, but for the whole area. And it's working well. A couple of our initiatives are the wonders of our earth. I think you've been given examples of these, and the Canadian canoe routes. Also, what we've got, what we brought out this year and will be in heavy circulation is our new cycling map. And I mentioned the Ride the Highlands program, which encourages people to come by motorcycle. And that's the Ride the Highlands map. And of course, we have a maple culinary development tour. And this is the brochure that's come out as a result of that because we all like maple syrup. Now, 2017 media relations, excuse me. We've pitched ideas to the snowmobile media and it's been picked up by SnowTrax TV, OSM and Snowmobile TV and Go Snowmobile, Snowmobiling Magazine. And these are stories that, as purchasers of marketing, we couldn't even begin to afford, thousands upon thousands of dollars of publicity. Just brings people to the area. Now, that being said, this winter would be nice if we had more snow, we know that. The Toronto Star did a nice story on glapping at Elements Luxury Tended Camp and Nature Spa in partnership with Ottawa Tourism. We got a nice story inside motorcycles magazine. The Go Media Fam Tour, we have travel writers from Norway, Germany and Japan. What's cool and new, new to me is bloggers, people with their own websites that will write stories. And these stories on websites get read just as much as your local newspaper. Bloggers, Bacon is Magic, Let's Discover Ontario, Cottage Fishing Adventures, Jan Fettak and Scott Whalen. And of course, we attend the Travel Media Association of Canada marketplace. And we're always promoting the Ottawa Valley as a destination. Now let's talk visitor information centers. We have 12 visitor information centers within Renfrew County and we serve 19,765 people. Those people, when they come to our centers, if we didn't have someone there to welcome them, they might not stay around. Every summer, our VICs get visited by a mystery shopper through the Ontario Highlands Ovation Program. And got some pretty good feedback. The staff member was very good at her job. We had the entire conversation in front of the tourism resource shelving. As she was speaking, she was scanning the shelves for various resources for other things that would be applicable to us. She was able to use her own family as an example for what they enjoyed in the area. It was a pleasure dealing with her and I have a feeling she has assisted many family to having a fun time in the Renfrew area. And these comments we get from people all the time. I will mention something about the ovation program is that when you're evaluated, people evaluated get some very tangible feedback about how they can improve their resources. Okay, what are we up to in 2018? Media relations. We will be attending the Travel Media Association of Canada Conference. We'll be hosting domestic and international media once again. And we'll increase blog outputs to support the Come Wander brand. We'll be marketing and there is marketing and product development. We will be assessing adventure touring. And yes, we talked about the Ride the Highlands program. Adventure touring is those people that want to get off the pavement and want to get out on backroads. And we're going to be assessing, do we have, yes, we have the resources, but do we have a need for that? And of course, that will complement the existing Ride the Highlands program. We will continue to go to trade shows. I've talked about the cycling, we have our new map out and of course, the Ottawa Valley Maple Adventures. And there will be continued support of the travel trade efforts that we have with Ontario Highlands. And if I can interject there, the Bonneville Caves is a part of that partnership and how fun it is to be sitting around the table with like-minded people from the Ottawa Valley, but all across Ontario Highlands, who wants to create a brand and get that out into international markets, which attracts more people, not just to the Ottawa Valley, but all of Ontario's Highlands. And again, as we move forward into 2018, networking is a big deal amongst us tourism folks. One, we like to tell stories and yeah, we're social. Just this past week, we had the inaugural Ottawa Valley Tourism Trading Post. We had a couple of dozen people in the room and there's already a waiting list for next year. Successful, I know I came out of that room with four very tangible projects that I will be doing with other businesses as a result of that day. Marketing, or sorry, networking opportunities was identified by our, our membership is very important and we will be working on making sure that those needs are met. Workshops, new workshops in the new year, we have customer service and networking workshops, tailored in-house and facilitated by Lauren McElfartherick. She does this training for us and she's moving towards being a no-tech certified trainer. That saves our organization all kinds of money by having an in-house trainer. Our industry is a collection of businesses and organizations and community leaders that have challenges. As with any challenge, you try, you try to create an opportunity. As with opportunity, one takes an inventory of the challenges. Our industry is challenged by the weather. We are challenged by the minimum wage increase. We are challenged by making sure we have qualified people in our workforce. We are challenged in how we access training to help us better able to get our stories out there. Very soon, we in our industry will weigh in on the transient accommodation tax. This could in fact have the potential for additional funds for tourism promotion and product development. And yes, we will weigh in. It is our responsibility to our communities. We have decisions to make and input into how we can compete and possibly collaborate with larger regions. It is our responsibility to you folks who are leaders in your communities. In the last year, we have been given new opportunities to tell potential visitors why they should come here. We are the county that is a prime player in one, the Algonquin Trail and two, the Ottawa River Heritage Designation. This gives people already doing things along the river more leverage. Events like the Upper Ottawa River Race and Paddle, Whitewater Rafting, Canoeing, Kayaking, Cycling, Storytelling and all that comes with it. Players in these processes, players in these processes that allow these cool things to happen should be proud of the legacy that we get to nurture here in Renfrew County and pass on to our ancestors and their visitors. The OVTA will play a key role in this messaging. What gives me great pleasure today is that I'm not standing at the front of a room asking decision makers to please put us at tables so that our tourism voices can be heard. But rather, please keep making those decisions that keep us at those tables where our voices have been heard. For that, I thank you not only for how far we have come, but also for how far we have yet to go. And let's keep telling our stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That was excellent. I especially like the photo of the person in the plaid with their arms out of the Algonquin Trail. That is a fantastic photo.
Yes, yours truly.
At this time, does anybody have any questions for Chris? councillor Dwyer.
Thank you very much, warden, for you to Mr. Kingsbury. Thank you, that was a standing presentation. I'm curious, through the presentation, you had both provincial, the Highlands and the local. I'm wondering, you have break down, I think we may have seen it in this chamber, but could you give me an idea of the almost 1.6 million, how many of them are considered domestic and how many from LA? But yeah, Melissa.
Your president, Kingsbury, and so, but we're about 98% domestic visitations. So we've been from Ontario and Western Quebec. And about 1% to 2% comes from outside of Canada, or outside of Ontario and international.
Excellent. councillor Visselke, Laura.
I was just going to thank Chris. You do a wonderful job and you know, you keep tourism as front and center for all of us in all our communities. So we need to thank you for the work that you do. I know it's all volunteers on your part and it's just wonderful. So keep up the good work.
I appreciate that and I think I made it clear that we appreciate the support that we get from folks in this room. I don't go anywhere in the county that people don't approach me and tell me just that. Thank you.
I think it's a true labor of love for you. councillor Sweet.
Well, thank you very much. And before we, before you started, the first thing I asked, Melissa, was what, do you have the numbers? I have a numbers guy and every year that I'm sitting there, I ask, how many, how many visitors are we getting in here as an opposite town, how we doing? And it's nice to see a movement forward and upwards as far as numbers are concerned. There's four pillars in the county of Renfrew for economic development. And one, the rising star is tourism. And I know that the OVTA and OTO have worked tirelessly over the number of years to do, to do and build that. And it's nice to see that work showing up there in the numbers and the increases that we see here. I think in response to councillor Dwyer, I think there's a little bit of a change in the dynamics as far as the numbers are concerned of overnight stays and day trippers and things of that nature that we see. And that's changed a little bit. Nonetheless, they're spending money and all the hard work that you've, you've put in, you and your team sitting, your girls at the back or the team at the back or whatever, that have done an excellent job and continue to do so. It is something that we certainly need and hopefully we'll see it continue to rise over year over year. So job well done.
Thank you. And you know, when it comes to overnight stays, we cannot discount how many of those overnight stays are just visiting friends and relatives. So I guess in that vein, we're all accommodators here as far as tourism goes. We all welcome visitors into our home that travel the area and spend money here. So keep up the good work, be friendly to folks.
councillor Kingsbury.
Yeah, you just briefly mentioned one of the challenges was the increase in the minimum wage. I'm just wondering if you could listen and tell us how you're going to deal with that.
I can't speak totally on behalf of my colleagues. I know personally, prices are going to go up. That's the bottom line for a lot of folks. I, as a business owner, don't plan on having my work conditions change for my staff. I'm always looking at how do we improve conditions for our staff. But our customers will be paying for the minimum wage. And I think we all might have to get used to that.
Thank you. councillor Farr.
I'd like to thank you very much for the presentation. It was excellent. And I'm interested in your cycling portion. You have your new map out. Are you working closely with municipalities in order to give them a little bit of guidance as far as the signage?
Yeah, good question, Mayor Farr. Our county cycling map, we, those of us that drive the roads around Renfrew County know that you can tailor thousands upon thousands of itineraries to bike the Ottawa Valley. You and I will talk briefly in the next little while because we have in Eaganville some ideas about how we share those cycling routes by maps that will be coming out this summer.
about how we share those cycling routes by maps that will be coming out this summer to break down our area more specifically so that people travel through Adniston Bromley, Volter Valley, north of Onewoberforce and yeah, we've, someday I, I see that the Ottawa Valley will be a cycling Mecca, not just for fast bikes, but fat bikes and mountain bikes. Yeah.
Okay, councillor Robinson.
Chris, nice to see you again. I was looking forward to the presentation and your enthusiasm. I just want to go back a little bit to what councillor Sweet is discussing. Do you break it down further as to what areas are attracting more tourism, more tourists and that sort of thing, so we can sort of see a sector a little bit more as far as the numbers are concerned?
I'll pass that on to Melissa.
Sure. Are you referring to activities, like the types of activities? Yes, we have that information. We can provide that.
I think that would be a very useful thing for each of our municipalities to have. I'm assuming that, you know, the whitewater region is probably one of the heaviest areas, but I wouldn't mind seeing where we're, where we're pulling the people from and to. That would be great.
Yes, we can provide that. It doesn't break, the visitation is not broken down by municipality, it's just by the county, but it does break it down by activity.
That would be great. Anything further for Chris or Melissa? councillor Donahue.
Just one thing, I was intrigued at the suggestion, certainly amongst those who have resided at my place, many of them I would consider transient and I'm wondering how you would suggest, I might go about trying to tax them.
Careful, Chris, that's a trap.
Is it taxing for, on people to be staying at your place? Do you keep them up late at night as part of the tax on their visitation or money? Listening to your stories, Mayor? How do you tax your visitors? Good question.
I might get rid of my, I shouldn't say this on film, get rid of my relatives that come and stay for a week or so, three days, that should be the max, then they should be taxed.
Oh, three at your house? I think at our house, it's one.
Chris, thank, on behalf of all of county council and staff, thank you so much to you and your team. It's wonderful to have you all here as a show of support and your belief in the OVTA and the OBO. You know, we all realize the benefit of your organization and thank you so much for all of your work.
Okay, I thank you and I thank my team also.
Mister Hutton, is there any correspondence?
Thank you, Madam Margaret. All correspondence has been forwarded to the appropriate committee.
Thank you. So at this time, it's a little early for a break, so we're going to move on to councillor staff and the finance and administration report, please.
Thank you, Warden. We, your finance administration committee, whispering, according to this follows. Number one is the council remuneration summary. Two is the treasurer's report, financial summary. Three, assessability compliance report. Four is the information and privacy commissioner of Ontario annual statistics for '17. Five is the board of health, the estimate for 2018, which is $1,421,259. Six is the board of health statement of remuneration for review. Seven is the federal legislation on cannabis for those who are users. Eight is AMO's 218 pre-budget submission. Nine is the public transit infrastructure fund. Ten is the integrity commissioner cost, it was a request to look at the cost and we were given preliminary or initial cost. Now the county has received the final invoice and the total is $7,606.03. Eleven is the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus media release. Twelve is the M-PAC funding requirements. The Tony Renfrew will be approximately $1,542,140.85 compared to 2017 at $1,527,718.5, which is a 0.94 increase. Thirteen, the Ministry of Finance advising municipal flexibility in setting tax policy, education tax rates and property assessment updates. Fourteen is the municipal payers and new indicators. Fifteen is regulation 588/17 assessment, planning, assessment, management, planning for municipal infrastructure. Sixteen, and it begins with resolutions, it's moved by chair and second by committee that the county and council approves the administration assistant position in human resources be changed to administrative and human resources. Seventeen is resolution number FA-16-18-01-08, moved by chair and second by committee. The council approved the renaming and reclassification of election officers slash general per group three at 42,800 to 48,878, elections group group four at 48,172 to 54,938 of the employment bylaw number one, non-union staff salary grid of January 1st, 2018. Number eighteen is resolution number FA-16-18-01-10, that the 2018 membership fee to the Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario in the amount of $1,751.50 including HST be approved. Nineteen, resolution number FA-16-18-01-11, moved by chair and second by committee that the 2018 membership fee to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario in the amount of $8,774.44 including HST be approved. Number twenty, resolution number FA-16-18-01-12, moved by chair and second by committee that the 2018 membership fee to Federation Canadian Municipalities in the amount of $14,868.23 including HST be approved. Number twenty-one, which is 2018 county of Renfrew budget, as of January 25th, 2018 budget workshop meeting, council adopted the following resolution, formally approve the 2018 county Renfrew budget. That a bylaw to adopt the estimates of the sums required during the 2018 year for general and general capital and all purposes of the county rent to an amount of $43,984,534 be adopted at the next session of county council and further that the 2018 tax rates for the county purposes be adopted by law after the adoption of the 2018 tax policy bylaws. Included within their bylaws is a bylaw to adopt the estimates of the sums required during the year 2018 for general capital and all purposes of the county of Renfrew for adoption at this session of county council. All of which is respectfully submitted by my selfish chair, members Doncaster, Donahue, Murphy, Peckett, Robertson, Sweet and Visneski Moore and I would like to thank my colleague Van Doncaster, chair of the committee that day. It was a really long meeting session and I wasn't feeling that well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back. Information out of number one. Number two, the treasurer's report. Five, the board of health. Six. councillor Kingsbury.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you go on further in the report where it has a striking committee, it has all the committees down, it even has states in there that the health committee is responsible for the board of health, so why would this not come back to the health committee for review before it came here?
I believe it did and there was an error in councillor Donahue's reported remuneration. Am I, am I correct? Mister Hutton.
If, if I may, and I'm trying to recall, I think we got the information after health committee went to finances, my recollection, not the chair.
That's right.
But again, my recollection has sometimes been called.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected, you are correct, Mister Hutton. councillor Donahue.
Yes, it was correct and I'm not, the, the health committee certainly has the oversight of all responsibility of the board of health, but this in particular was, was a statutory obligation of the board of health to provide to all of the obligated municipalities, including Pepper and South Algonquin in the District of Nettisick. That, I don't call that it's inappropriate that it comes through finance because this is, or finance added administration because this is, would certainly could be construed as administrative matter and as to here is the compensation or remuneration that is paid directly from the board of health to members on that, so I think that this certainly would be an appropriate avenue for this to come forward.
Suffolk, intrigued?
Yeah, so I gather from that, that statement then, that the FNA committee has approved this portion of the report, has approved this statement of remuneration.
Yeah, that's correct. Have you seen this information in the report?
councillor Stan?
Yeah, I think it's administrative and finance issue too because we've had numerous discussions over like, over 13 years here about this amount and there's no flexibility in it. We get the invoice and we pay it and that's it.
councillor Donahue.
I think there's been a few, inflation of two different ways. We are obligated to pay the sums for the operation of the health unit and my colleague councillor Stan is absolutely correct on this. With respect to the remuneration, the, this agency, that is the County of Renfrew, does not have the authority over the remuneration paid to board of health, members, that, that authority rests with the board of health, as I'm, I'm assuming there may be other agencies outside of any others. I do know that there are some separate agencies that are remunerated through the County of Renfrew. This one is not, so it is received as information, though there is no approval authority expected of either finance administration or the council.
Thank you. councillor Kingsbury.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm not connecting here or something is not coming across me, but in, in, in looking at this, let's go back to my other statement where the FNA committee approved this, so the FNA committee is, is saying, we approve these funds to be well-spent or, an example might be, this remuneration is for how many meetings? Is this for one meeting? Is this for five meetings? I'm sure the FNA committee has looked into that, or have you just taken a life and stand on this and saying, yeah, this amount is open by us and we're just, we just pass it through?
councillor Vostuski, Warden.
The, the County of Renfrew and the FNA do not have the authority on the remuneration. That is the board of health. The board and there are four members of county council, that's it, and that's myself, Michael, Peter and Jed, but the board, by the rules and legislation, the board decides the remuneration. The board has always maintained that all board members be remunerated at the rate of county council, so what we pay is what county council, what the board pays. But FNA does not have the authority, not, does these chambers have the authority to dictate the remuneration.
Thank you. Yes, I was just going to say, FNA received it only as information. councillor Imo.
Yes, thank you to councillor Kingsbury and I think the other part of your question was the remuneration is not a lump sum, it's, it's paid out on a, on a pay period throughout the year that reflects the health unit. You will soon get, as of next year, the attendance log submitted to the, to the bodies that have, that have sent the members to sit on the board of health and this year, I can tell you that the chair attended about 62 meetings on behalf of a health unit. Myself, councillor Donahue and councillor Reinwald, we were about 34, 35 or 36 approximately, even more accurate numbers, but I will send you that and copy it to the rest of council, I will send you that report. So you can be sure it's not for one meeting, it's for a series of meetings and we are trying to be a little more transparent with that, so as of next year, county council will start getting that kind of attendance log.
councillor Donahue.
Thank you. And I was remiss, thank you, the fact of chair, I was remiss also. It is, it has not kept pace with the remuneration. This, the board of health utilizes the, the standing committee rate of the largest municipality that is providing the obligated funds. At the time of, of that discussion, it was $175 was the ad hoc, because by that time, committees of council had become on an annual basis, but still we had arrived at $175 for ad hoc meetings, so that was, so everything was predicated upon that. So I know on mine, the, the amount of money identified as remuneration to me is evenly divisible by 175. I don't know what it is, it's $4,200 by 175, but I think it's appropriate, as councillor Imo has said, the board has decided that all the members, even those that are appointed by the province, there will be information passed on with that remuneration that identifies the attendance log also, which is still not giving the authority to, to council to approve or disapprove, but at least will be provided much more transparent.
Thank you for that clarification. councillor Stan, do you have something?
Yeah, just, and I apologize, I don't know, it's obvious this is six, but for some reason I think it's number five, so, and I guess because every year I expect that dialogue in number five, but the same statement applies, we have no more authority over number six or number five, it's purely information to us.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, then, and now we'll move on. Number seven, the cannabis legislation. Number eight, AMO's pre-budget submission. Number nine, public transit infrastructure fund. Ten, the integrity commissioner. Eleven, the EOWC, oh, yeah, sorry, councillor Donahue, what number do you want to speak to?
Yes, sorry, apologies, it was number nine. Number nine, I'm the chair of the public transit infrastructure fund. I just, once more, and repeat, I think at every opportunity and I repeat, that the provincial gas tax fund is levying on the order of $5 million in the County of Renfrew and all of 350,000 of this is being utilized to manage congestion and a degraded environment in someone else's jurisdiction. And I contrast that with a presentation that was made by township council and the township of Adniston Bromley, by Edinburgh Gas with respect to, to expansion of the gas network in Ontario and stack, there is a statutory prohibition that would allow any natural gas company to expand their system by levying any of their current rate payers. So the, any expansion to their system would have to be borne by those that are requiring it, so I'm just, I find that there is a very significant contrast in those, those monies that are levying in our municipality to ease congestion and environmental issues in some other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I always count on you to bring that up, Michael, because it's a very, very, very important piece of inequity that needs to be fixed. Does anybody have anything further on nine? Okay, we'll go back on 10. Eleven, the EOWC. Twelve, M-PAC. councillor Imo.
My annual rant. We don't pay good value for the money we already pay from M-PAC and I'm at a loss at what to do except shout from the bleachers, but I'll shout again, we don't pay good value for the money we pay and I'm, you know, the desire to raise a figure at a percentage every year in San Diego and all of us paying into it, with little or no say. Again, the only member from the M-PAC board is a mayor or councillor in Eastern Ontario, which I believe is Peterborough County, it's in that area. The rest are all not of municipal background, usually either finance or banking or insurance, which not of municipal background, usually either finance or banking or insurance, which is as devoid from reality as you can get, um, that's all I can say.
Thank you for your annual rant. Anything further? Uh, number 13, Ministry of Finance. 14, Municipal Affairs. 15, the Asset Management Planning. And we'll move on to Resolutions. Number 16, sort of the housekeeping thing. Uh, number 17, the POA Collections Court. Moving on, number 18, uh, membership for MFoa. 19, our membership for AMO. I think our membership was well worth its cost this year, that's, or last year. Uh, number 20, uh, FCM membership dues. And number 21, the Budget. Councillor Stack?
Thank you, Warden. I just want to express my appreciation to Jim and Jeff and the staff for last week's Budget Workshop Day and for the councillors that were here to push through, there was some healthy discussion here at the end of the day, the debate that I thought was really necessary to take place, but in the end it was, I, I won't take it and the, and the budget was, uh, accepted and, uh, I'm here today and I assume will be accepted honestly today. I have had a talk to Jim and Jeff about when they start the budgeting process next year, that perhaps we could schedule the Budget Workshop Day as early as September, not as the day to do it, but to announce it as early as September. Everybody's got extremely busy lives, I know that, but we have 900 employees and this is $150 million, it's one day out of the year that I think is our number one responsibility, and we, you know, we, it's, it's difficult to get full attendance and we need to be added, need to be committed for the day, so I think it would be helpful to ask as councillors, if we heard in September that it's going to be January 20th instead of in December, just allows us to do more planning and, and, and book our time. So Jim and Jeff are going to take that into consideration next year, and again, thanks to everyone.
I understand what you meant, you just left the announcement for the date.
For the date.
Thank you. Sorry, I, I, you lost me there for a second.
That's what I meant, not the date, it's September.
Absolutely, yes. Uh, anything further? Councillor Dennehy?
Thank you very much, Chair. I would not be so bold as to, to guess at what they support for this item may be, but I do want to state at the outset that I believe, uh, that, uh, everything that I wished to, to bring forward was brought forward at Budget Workshop. I think it was vigorously discussed, debated, argued, slugged out, um, so I'm certainly satisfied in that. Uh, the only, and, and at this point, uh, it was made very clear that this was, uh, the budget that was supported at Budget Workshop, and having done that, I am certainly going to support this, I believe it is, uh, important, that is my idea, it is important that we hash it out and then ultimately come together. The only thing that I do wish to, I think, address sometime over the course of 2018 is there was, in that discussion, my colleague from Town of Redfern, Councillor Ema, had brought forward, uh, some suggestion that there are some capital, uh, issues that have not been identified, uh, and I think it's imperative that, uh, if, if we are predicate our discussions and determination on the appropriateness of the funds that we levy, uh, we have to have as much available, as much information available to us, and as it stands now, if there are items that are not addressed within our capital asset management plan, i.e., uh, we certainly have been discussing it from the time of 2016, when I chaired operations, we were discussing then the expansion of Pedawala Boulevard and the appropriateness of that. Uh, I think at the time, if I recall, uh, because of the anticipated size of that project, it was determined that this would be, be above that threshold whereby funds would be borrowed for that project, even then, I thought that it might be appropriate to identify it, uh, as a capital, uh, item that is going to be, be addressed. Uh, so I think that it's imperative that if there are things that we are not anticipating as we review individually and then come together to discuss, that those things must be addressed.
Thank you. Anything further? Councillor Sweet?
Thank, thank you very much, yeah, um, just to follow up with what was just said by Councillor Dennehy, um, last year we spent, Councillor Pekka and I, a delegation spent on your south, Warden, uh, spent three, four days down in Trumal and in Argo pushing the, the validity of forlaying Pedawala Boulevard. Uh, that we got a good reception, uh, with the various people that we talked to. However, um, I understand that it's not on the 10-year project for the County of Redfern. It's very difficult when we go down there and try to convince the, the province and the federal government who act as the partners on a project like this, that it's not on our 10-year project, so, okay, but it's on your 10-year project there, uh, maybe we'll take a look at it. It has to be on there somewhere, somehow, subject to available grants and funding being made available, but nonetheless, it has to be shown somewhere on there that, that it's part of the 10-year plan or a priority for the County of Redfern. If it's not, then we're wasting our time going down there, because I can tell you, sitting across the table, I know what the response will be from those who have made the decision, but it is a priority for you and Redfern Kelly, you come back and talk to us, and it's not there. So I think consideration has to seriously be given somewhere along the way with, with that particular project. Simply with 417, and it's, it's a priority for us, and it's easier to go down there saying it is a priority, so I, I think somewhere along the line, uh, what Mayor Dennehy is having, Councillor Dennehy is saying is absolutely true, it has to be identified, spend a lot of time, a lot of money going down there, including, uh, global affairs or lobbying group and all of that sort of stuff, so, uh, I, I would challenge, uh, staff to come up somewhere that to identify it, uh, as a priority on the 10-year project.
Thank you for that. I've got Councillor Ema, Councillor Ryan Wald, then Councillor Stack.
Um, thank you. Further to comment, yes, I did raise some issues, uh, those were the results of my uneducated eye looking at things, uh, and structures, and, and I fully expect that when the combination review is completed, uh, later on this year, um, my questions will be answered more fully, and I'm sure that we'll develop a strategy to address those in the long term. And I share the opinion of Councillor Sweet, that I think the, uh, Pedawala Bridge and Pedawala Boulevard, um, we need a placeholder with some kind of a figure injected into it, again, uh, you know, and identify what kind of county funds are available, so that we know what gap we're aiming at, and, uh, I recognize that that is difficult and probably flies in, in the face of all sorts of, of, uh, financial regulation rules and expectations to the treasurer, and I wish him well with that.
Thank you for that. Councillor Ryan Wald?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to point out to the staff that the, the package that was presented at the, uh, at the previous meeting was probably one of the best I've, I've seen today, so I just wanted to thank staff very, very much for a well-organized and well-put-together package, you know, for any to read and go through, even though we had some differences of opinions, we, we all came out with, you know, at the end with the, I think with the right answer. So thank you very much for, for your hard work.
Councillor Stack?
I guess I, I just want to be clear, I'm understanding what's being said. I absolutely agree that there is a list of projects there, and technically the most significant one is Pedawala Boulevard and the bridge, excuse me, but are we saying that we need to put that on the capital asset management plan, attach figures to it, and then redo a long-term financial plan to adjust to that? I just want everybody clear, that's not something that I would like us to go in that direction. I mean, definitely to have an addendum with a list and some, some approximate numbers there so we can be, doing especially when we're going to Budget Workshop Days, rather than having to go from memory and try to pull projects out, it would be a document, maybe a separate document, would list those in dollars so that we can be doing that and, uh, keeping it in mind and considering it, but I, I don't think the intent is to inject those numbers into the existing plans and we'll be right.
Uh, Mr. Hutton, then Councillor Sweet, then Councillor Ema?
Thank you very much, Chair, through you, County Council, and thanks very much for the discussion. I was thinking that I would have a discussion with, uh, Mr. Foss and Steve Boland after this session and come up with some, uh, ideas that we could bring forward, uh, in the future. I haven't, or listening also to what, uh, Councillor Ema said in terms of regulations, but I think, I think we could come up with something that we could put forward to council. In terms of those projects which are, are not in our asset management plan because they're not planned and not funded, but something that there's some type of commitment, a priority as Councillor Sweet said about these projects, they haven't on our radar screen, uh, we do know we have a cost, we've got an EAS, environmental assessment on the Pedawala Boulevard, one, so if council can give staff some time to talk this over, we can think of some ideas that might satisfy, you know, how about council wishes?
Thank you, Mr. Hutton, that was actually going to be my suggestion, it's, um, sort of difficult, like, do we, do we budget for something that we don't have the, uh, funding from the other entities? How do we go about explaining to the province and the feds, no, this is a priority if we haven't put it in our long-term plan? On the flip side, are we planning for something that we can't afford on our own? It's, it really is, uh, it'll be a conversation, I think, for Jeff and Jim. Councillor Sweet?
Yeah, and certainly, I, I, I don't intend, I don't, I don't see this going in there, but you're right, that the funds are not available at this point in time. My, my argument here is that if it, if it's not even identified, then it's very difficult to sit across the table for any of us who have made any presentations to any of the cabinet, et cetera, if it's not there, um, it, it's difficult. All I'm asking is somewhere along the line that it be identified as something that, that is essential, uh, for Pedawala or for the County of Redfern. This started in 2006 with an environmental assessment, uh, and there was a delay because of, uh, because of an election and there was a bump up and all that sort of good stuff. It is true that there's $100,000 in the budget this year to do some design work, uh, there, so it is moving ahead, uh, but again, as I said, i- if it's not something that you can positively say to whomever the Minister of Infrastructure Renewal, of the federal government equivalent, it's very difficult, uh, sit down there and, and talk to them if it's not seen as a priority, just as it is for us to try and get 417 onto Bob Shirelli's list of, uh, should, is it Bob Shirelli? No? Who are they?
They changed.
Who? Whatever. Anyways, to get on there as a priority. It might change shortly, anyway, you'd have a double headache, I think, I think we're all on the same page as understanding how, how we can do this and not leave it in the capable hands of staff to come up with a, a process that might reflect the need for that particular situation.
Okay, so I've got a lot of hands up, I'm gonna go, Councillor Ema, Councillor Ryan Wald, Councillor Farr, Councillor Love.
To, to Councillor Stack's comment, yes, I suspect the plan will have to be revised at some point in the next little while. Um, the, this is the only project that you can guess at in the future that doesn't have a potential revenue stream. If we end up doing something with the paramedic stations, if we end up doing something with childcare and social services, there's all, there's lease revenue coming from those, I would guess, if we end up housing more subs, not markets, that's better modeled than the past, um, and we wouldn't move forward with that kind of model, but there, nobody would need the lease Pedawala Boulevard bridge to get finance from, so it's the only one that really is a, a bump in the road for us financially in the future. The other ones are, you know, there's some revenue could potentially be generated from joining to other county assets or, or other community assets, so they're not as, as critical of, um, to the financial planning in the long term, right? So I, I would suspect, yes, the asset management plan will have to be updated, but I think we knew that all along, and that was suggested last week, was, you know, that this is not cast in stone, that it evolves, um, and we're going to discover other assets that either have to be regulated or developed depending on what happens over the next five years, very slow to cover.
Thank you for that. Councillor Ryan Wald?
Just a comment, uh, as far as the, uh, you know, the bridge and Boulevard, I mean, it's a project like any other project with different phases to, to the project, conceptual, preliminary, detailed phases, so they're plugged nicely in conceptual phase of the project, but it'd be on a project list.
Thank you for that. Councillor Farr?
Yes, I would like to thank staff for all the work we put into the budget process and all the, uh, the ability of, of giving answers back to us when we had the discussion during the Budget Workshop, um, and it's nice to see the council finding it is high on council's list, but I would also ask that, um, everyone in this chamber take into account that we only have one taxpayer, and they're being stressed right now, as we've heard from Chris, the small businesses, um, are going to have to put up the cost of things in order to handle the increase in the minimum wage, and I know there's a lot of taxpayers in North D'Or and Waterford that are pretty much getting to their max now, so whenever we do an increase, whether it's at our local municipality or here at the County of Redfern, um, we do have to take that into account when we're doing our budget. Thank you.
Councillor Love?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Um, yes, I agree, our taxpayers are stressed, there's no doubt about that. The whole point of having a long-term financial plan is to ensure that we are doing the best we can to, to have this be a smooth transition. So when we set our plan, uh, you know, the original intent of 3%, we have discovered that there have been some surpluses over the first few years that were, thankfully, um, are going to assist us, but if we don't know about the projects that are sort of the monsters on the edge of the map, uh, that Councillor Ema did mention, I mean, if we're not factoring those in in some way, just to be aware of them, then it would be very easy for these chambers to, to weigh our decision closer on the question of our concern about our taxpayers, because we're not seeing the full picture going forward. So the idea that we would have some of these projects that could potentially significantly impact, uh, a decision as to whether or not to, uh, change the trajectory from 3% to, I think it was 2.3 that was suggested at Budget Workshop, um, those sorts of projects, that's important information as for us to be aware of, so I think staff's, uh, idea that they would come about a way where we could be, uh, they'd be identified, we would be aware of that, that's very important to our decision-making process, because in the end, we do want to have, we've committed to this plan, we do want to be following this plan. We may have to amend this plan if our trajectory isn't correct, but that's for our staff to recommend, that's not really the decision that should be made at this table without the proper analysis having been done, and I think, uh, what's being suggested is a great way to approach this, to keep us aware of what's coming in the future but isn't part of the plan so that we can make good decisions.
Thank you, and I also think that one of the challenges that we faced last year and this year is that we didn't meet the growth that we thought we were, the real growth that we thought we were going to attain, and I think anytime we have a year like that, it makes it even more challenging, um, with our budgets. Uh, I'm gonna throw it to Councillor Stack, does anybody have anything else? Okay, well, I'll give you the last word.
I don't comment, just, you know, I think the consensus is obviously the value of the list and that. My concern is the numbers get out there, I mean, we've balanced our numbers of kind of all over 20 million over the last five years, by the time it comes back to be 30, you know, there's no engineering done on it, there's, you know, so, um, I don't, you know, we don't want to kill ourselves, 417 will cost us too, there'll be service room changes and things like that, so it's also equally important to be on the list, so I think there's real value in that list and trying to at least put a focus on some number there, but it should be almost like an addendum piece of information to the thing, and that's all I was trying to clarify, is that we're not going to change the plans, we're going to provide some additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything further? The report as a whole, can I get a mover?
Still move.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Excellent. Um, lunch will be here at noon, so I think we could all use five minutes. Is about to come to a break? Yep? Okay. Five minutes.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, so at the- All right, so at this time, I will have this over to Counselor Pickett with the operations report.
Thank you, Warden. We, our operations committee wish to report, recommend as follows. Number one, under information, the winter operations, the table is there. Finally, the bad weather of 2017 has come to an end and we're on to 2018. Any, or item number two, there's quotations and tenders at this time of the year, you know, staff are busy getting those ready to, whoa. Three, exemption, extension required in use of two-way radios, I think that's good news for every municipality in Rentrue County. They extended to January 4, 2021, hopefully we can push that further. Under resolutions, I implore the Whitewater Street Strut, resolution number OPCC 180103, moved by chair, seconded by committee. That approval be granted to the Township of Whitewater Region to allow alcohol in the county road, eight main street road routes, and common to the purposes of hosting the 2018 Whitewater Street Strut on July 14, 2018, subject to satisfying the conditions of approval as follows. That the Township of Whitewater Region agrees in writing to save harmless and identify the County of Rentrue for any and all liability as resulted this event to the satisfaction of the county's Director of Finance and Labor. That the Township of Whitewater Region provide liability insurance coverage, which includes the County of Rentrue, as a named additional insured to the satisfaction of the county's Director of Finance, Treasury, a copy of the certificate of insurances to be provided in advance of the event. That the Township of Whitewater Region make application form in a special occasion permit from the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario, which specifies the conditions under which alcohol is permitted. A copy of the permit is to be provided to the county in advance of the event. And that the Township of Whitewater Region outlines in writing how the conditions of the special occasion permit are to be satisfied. Background is there for council's information. That's the end of the report, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, Kingsbury, Love, McCain, Miller, Murphy, and Rynold.
Thank you. We'll go back, information item number one. Number two, quotes and tenders. Number three, the exemption for two-way radios. Again, I agree with the Chair, excellent news. And number four, Whitewater Streets Drought. Any concerns? Excellent. The report as a whole. Can I get a mover, please?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Thank you. We will move on to Chair Sweet. The DNP report, please.
Thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, we, your Development and Property Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, the planning division activity tracker can be found on pages 110 to 112. Item number two, another information item, municipal energy plan, that was, that we brought forward to our committee as a request to see what to be done to put an energy plan in place, but as you can see pursuant to the forum, forum that was put in place down in Ottawa, Mr. Kelly arranged a conference call between item one, et cetera, and the regional planning with Mr. Murphy off Calaboli Peaks, and they've had quite a discussion going forward, and opportunities as well as far as that possibility is concerned. Recently, the Development and Property Department's tasked with a review on how to support the Paris Accord and what effect that had on the corporation. You can see there to that end, through the County's Green Operations Committee, staff that were reviewing our current energy management plan, and will be completing on upgrade to include enhanced greenhouse gas emissions information. Committee also directed staff to review and bring a proposal forward in February that would include options on how the county should proceed and possible funding opportunities study. The Ottawa River Watershed, Mr. Kelly attending and meeting and requesting the watershed possible, possible creation of a Ottawa River Watershed Council, as to whether or not it was going to move forward. The concern that we had is that they wanted to be at the table should this council be put in place, and that's an ongoing section of the schedule as well. Page 124, you'll see the 2018 review of summer, a letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, that's going to be held on the February 15 in Newcastle, theme is building a stronger monetary. Congratulations on the premier award for agri-food innovation excellence. This was an award of $5,000, went to Kula Permaculture, farm, Stafford, Second Line and Orange and Valley Township. As I said, this award came in at $2,000, $5,000, congratulations. Request for interest in the Taste of the Valley for 2018 to the Economic Development, Rentrue County Agricultural Economic Development Committee. If you're interested in hosting a Taste of the Valley, if you're expression of interest in. Item number seven is the draft Ottawa Valley Tourism Consortium, the OVTA budget, which can be found on page 125. Number eight is the Forestry Harvest Tender Results, and you can see there, all three tenders have been awarded to Liver and Hydeman and Sons in Eaganville, and it looks like that we will come in on budget with regards to the, to the harvesting tenders. An update on number nine, the Ottawa Island Recreation Trail, the Okonkun Trail purchase update. The purchase of the second phase, as you, as you maybe apply a couple of them, as you know, the, the actual acquisition of the trail was put into three phases. Phase one to Meath Hill, second phase was up to the Chalk River subdivision, and beyond that, it was up into Patland Canyon. So the purchase of the second phase is proceeding on November the 29th. You can see there, Warden Murphy and McCain executing several legal agreements, which are now in the possession of a legal firm. As part of the transfer of the properties, the County of Rentrue issued a tax received in the amount of $24,528,324.88, and we pay that share for the second phase of $127,000.177. Cycling program, you can see there, $329,000 was received through the grant, congratulations to, to the staff here, please. Michael did, did some applications or grants for seven or eight municipalities for some $25,000 each, and they were successful. It's a four-year program, so we're looking forward to seeing that coming into the County of Rentrue. This is going to be part of the Okonkun Trail and the KMP Trail, that nine, as it says there, nine were successful with that. Warden, on number 11, United Township of Headclere and Mariah, and the correspondence is on page 126 and 127, maybe I could just hang on to that and deal with it as part of the addendum, which we'll cut on later, if that's providing, if you're comfortable with that.
Absolutely. Does everybody have a copy of the addendum number 19? Sorry. Does everybody have a copy of the addendum number 19 on their desks? All right, so we will hold off on number 11 until it's 19.
I'll deal with that as a whole, that number 11 and the addendum.
Thank you, yes.
Item number 12, the Ottawa Valley Recreation Management Plan, you have a copy of that on your desk. We're looking for input and comments back by the 28th of the, of February, and then we'll put that in, in a final draft, if you will, and, and bring it forward for the plume. Highland Sign Replacement, I understand it's looking very, very nice down there, something that has been necessary and needed, and so that's up and running. Okay, Bill 139, Better, Building Better Communities and Conserving Watershed Act, 2017, I don't know where they come up with these things, but, but the name, but that's what it is. As you can see there, part of the, the Planning Act is going to be difficult, we often refer to the OMB as the OMB, and the OMB is going to be a thing of the past. Eventually, it's going to be called the LPKT, Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. And so they're working their way through that as we, as we speak. You see some of the changes that are going to take place there. Resolution number, item number 15, resolution number DPCC 180102, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approves a reclassification of the Trails Coordinator for Group Six, from that figure you see in brackets, to Group Three, of the employment my law, non-union staff salary grid. You can see in the description, the flagship, for a full-time Trails Coordinator contract position, reporting to the manager of forestry and GIS. Business case post presentate, Trails position will be for a one-year contract, modified given the current time limits. So the, as you see, the, the requirement, the successful candidate will assist in facility in the management, maintenance, and promotion of KMP and Okonkun Trails. The, the change in salary for this staffing position has been factored into the 2018 budget for the period of nine months, for a nine-month contract, a OBD review at the end of 2018. Ontario Seat, Tree Seat Plant Closure, resolution number DPCC 180104, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County of Rentrue submit a letter to the province of Ontario in response to the Ontario Mayor's decision to close the Ontario Tree Seat Plant in Annes. And further, that the letter requests that closure be postponed until rest, solutions have been agreed upon by all parties involved. We see the background to this particular situation, it's a very important initiative here for forestry, certainly in the County of Rentrue. Item number 17, the County Official Five-Year Review, official plan amendment number 25, resolution number DPCC 180106, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approves the two special council meetings, county council meetings to be held on Thursday, March 22, 2018, at Egan's Nest in Eganville, and on Wednesday, April 4, at the Jermaine Hall, November, the first, the purpose of presenting the draft revised County Official Plan at that point in time, the staff will be there talking about the official plan and some of the requests that have been put in place. You see the open houses will start from 2:00 to 5:00, followed by a special council meeting starting at 6:00. These times will be confirmed at a later date, but that's the suggestion at this point in time. Tariff for fees and bylaws, our bylaw, I should say, resolution number DPCC 180107, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council passed a new tariff for fees bylaw for acquisitions, mainly respect for planning matters. You see the authorities to pass the tariff for fees bylaws, provided on the Section 69 of the Act. The rationale behind that is the increased fees also reflect the additional work in file, that will be required by the new planning appeal system under the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal, that's the sound of the OMB, so to speak. Unlike the Ontario Municipal Board, which you can add unified planning information and present a report basis of the no-ball hearing, looks at an appeal from the very, the very beginning, filed in County 18, will not hold the, German speaking, and will only consider the written letters as a one-hand title of laws, as it is. Going to take us some time to, to, to get a flavor for what this all means. Then with that, Chair, Warden, I'll go to the addendum, and I'll speak about the addendum and the item number 11 as well. Okay, the Okonkun Trail slash United Townships of Headclere and Mariah, resolution number DPCC 1801011, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approves the funds to support the review and opinion be provided through the County of Rentrue 2018 provision for unallocated funds budget, and further, the staff discussed with the county solicited the op, option to recover the costs that are incurred from the United Township of Headclere and Mariah from legal, legal involvement to the maximum $20,000 from the, from the unallocated budget. Just by way of, of some background and some information, there's been quite a flurry of letters coming to and from, from Headclere Mariah to us with regards to the, to the trail and the use of the trail, and I think there's a bit of a thread that runs through most of these letters, that would suggest that, that, that they feel that they haven't been consulted on, on, on what the trail use is, and et cetera, et cetera. They do not want mechanized vehicles, et cetera, and they feel they have the authority to, to restrict use in that area. Let me just say to you, to this chamber, this goes back to 2008, 2009, when we first started with this particular process, and at that time, as Chair and Committee, I, I brought the vision of what we wanted to use the Okonkun, but not at that time, the CP, abandoned CP rail line forward, and I always maintained, as did those who worked on the, the committee with me, that this was going to be a four-season, multipurpose, continuous trail from Smith Falls all the way to Madawatt. That was discussed many, many times here in these chambers, with everyone involved and, and with, with the discussions that was, what was ongoing. And in fact, there was a, a suggestion that Headclere Mariah was not kept informed. Going back to 2014, as we have, as we made by these chambers to keep Headclere Mariah in the picture and the look, and in fact, we scheduled six open houses throughout the Ottawa Valley to, to bring people up to speed on, on what we were doing, and everyone made the, the statement that if anyone, any community wanted to hear directly from us, that was my opening remarks, that I would be pleased to bring our team there. In attendance at the open house in Orange and the Hills was the former mayor of Headclere Mariah, head of Mayor of this council, who were in attendance at that time. So it comes as a bit of a surprise that I, that we received information that suggests that they were not aware of what was going on or what was not happening there. The other thing that I want to make sure that everyone in this chamber understands, the letter was sent to every property owner along the CP rail line, advising them, number one, of all of the opening open houses, and that we want the purpose of these open houses were going to be, in other words, an update of where we were going and what we were going to use them for, and again, at these open houses, I made the statement that any time that there was a request to be made for me to come, or any member of staff or whoever, that, that was happening. Unfortunately, Mr. Gibson and Mayor Gibson stepped down, it's unfortunate that that happened, but for whatever reason. Nonetheless, we had scheduled a meeting of the Development and Property Team to be in Headclere Mariah as a part of our normal travel within Rentrue County. That was unfortunately canceled as a result of the departure of the mayor at that time. We also scheduled a meeting with staff and their council on December, but because of weather, it, it too was canceled. So just as recently as, as January, I believe, January 23rd, we did appear before their council, explained what we were doing and what was going on, et cetera, et cetera, but since then, we've received other information as well. They provided with two hours, to the County Council, an equal opinion as to whether we can or cannot do what we want to do on this particular situation. As a result of that, there's a need for us to, to clarify what we can and cannot do, and that's what the purpose of this particular, that requires us, and that's what the addendum speaks to, that there's a need for, for an equal opinion with regards to this particular situation. I don't know if that, that helps, I've covered the, the whole ground or not. All of which is submitted by myself as Chair, by members Emon Farr, Keller, McCain, Miller, and Murphy.
Thank you. We'll go back to information, I don't know.
We'll go back to information on number one, the Activity Tracker. Number two, the Municipal Energy Plan. Three, the Ottawa River Watership. The, four, the Rural Summit. The Premiers Award. Number six, Taste of the Valley, two thousand and eighteen. Number seven, the O V T A Budget. Number eight, the Forestry Harvest Tender Results. Number nine, the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Van Wolden.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It's moving back to item eight, the two thousand and eighteen Forestry Harvest Tender Results. Approximately how many hectares are we fucking at here? Maybe it's a little.
I think that's way above my pay grade, and I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Kelly.
Sure you, Warden, I'm looking at my manager for a change G I S, and I have a shrug as well. Sorry, I don't have those numbers. We can get those too.
Just for information, I already have.
Fair enough.
That would be excellent information, thank you for that. Anything further on eight? Number nine? Number ten, the Cycling Program. Congratulations to Mike Berger and to all of those that got some money for this very important initiative. Number, oh, we're going to skip number eleven and put up with number nineteen, with your indulgents. Number twelve, the O V R T Management Plan. Number thirteen, the Pylon Sign. That sign is beautiful. Peter thinks it's funny, it's called Pylon, don't you?
I know.
I know, we're the pylons. And that was a commercial, too. It is a truly beautiful sign, and you can't miss it as you're driving and in Brentford. Number fourteen, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Doncaster.
Yeah, sorry, I wonder if I could just back up one item to the draft Recreation Trail Management Plan. I believe Councilor Sweet mentioned sending a report to Bill for comments by February twenty-eighth. I think that was the date, right?
Yeah, okay.
Although I don't think anything significant, I'm just wondering if that timeline's a little too short for some municipalities, because it just gets in the cycle of their next set of meetings, right? So if they don't happen to have a council meeting by that point in time, I don't know if it'd fit in my schedules. And I don't know how tight that timeline is, if it's like.
Let's throw that.
Thank you. And indulgence of the word and the Chair of the Committee, I could suggest that if there's an issue, perhaps he could notify us of that on an individual basis, and then we could consider that a, without surprise, Chair.
Yeah, I don't become, I'm worried it is right. And so if it means another week or so, or two weeks or whatever, fair enough. If they just maybe contact us, that their comments are coming, I'm sure we can.
Yes, if they get it right, then do it fast.
Absolutely.
So I would say to any municipality that thinks that they need more time, please just let the Chair and Mr. Hatton know, and we will go from there. Thank you for that, Councilor Doncaster, very good point.
Yes, Councilor. I'm just wondering if the PDF of the report is sent to our, every day, so probably slowly.
Sure you, Warden, yes, that was the plan that I sent. I think U C A O's are going to see it, and will make sure we send after today's.
Thank you. Good idea. All right then, number fifteen, the Trails Coordinator. Number sixteen, the Tree Seat Plant Closure. Councilor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'm not sure if the news article and opinion were attached to this report. I couldn't find them readily, so I can relax to the D M P report. And in reading that in particular, it was the article that was written in Golden Mail. Seems to be a fairly comprehensive discussion of this issue, but there is some assertion that private interests might be able to, or would be expected to, to fill this gap that's being created. And I always say that because I didn't delve any deeper than what was available to the D M P Committee. But once more, I find this very disquieting. And I almost lumped this into the same kind of category as having the Environmental Commissioner taking a pejorative view towards some forestry practices that are being exercised, particularly in Alton Park, that are state-of-the-art with respect to audit processes and accommodate all interests. Likewise, this seems to demonstrate to me an obliviousness with respect to the importance of forestry, to our economy, and in fact, to our cultural heritage in the Ottawa Valley, that once more, it seems that our particular interests almost seem to be falling through the cracks, not by omission, not by commission, but by omission. And I find this very disquieting once more. So I'm certainly in agreement with this initiative to make correspondence voicing our displeasure. Thank you.
Yes, and that was a lot of the discussion at Development and Property as well, that this sort of flies in the face of our forestry management and, you know, growing for the conditions. I see Councilor Emo.
Thank you, Warden, and to Councilor Donahue, something to talk about Committee was somewhat similar to the demise of Kemba, Kemba Agricultural School, where it was announced and it was paddling in place to try and save it without any real commitment from the province, or for reasons will happen with this. Also recognizing there are some requirements under various provincial and federal legislations to reduce greenhouse gases and/or plant more trees. So this seems to fly in the face of that as well. So we're trying to string those together as well, wondering where the urban areas, where they receive their trees, and if they're applying to their capacity as well. So there's a few questions, the primaries of the committee, to try and track on the importance of this facility, not just in terms of jobs, of industry vibrant, but at the same time to recognize that it also plays an important part in provincial federal realizing some of the policy objectives.
Thank you for that. Anything further? Number seventeen, the official plan review, Councilor Dismuski, Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The, it states that, so it's from two to five, and then a special county, a special county council meeting at six. Is that for both events? Do we have two special meetings?
Yes, that, okay. That was the intention, yes.
Okay, so that's been set, I can notify my council that that's, or is that still tentative?
Well, that's what we're approving today, but yes, the idea is that those two dates seem to be the most, giving the most people the ability to be there, considering we all have our lower tiers as well.
Okay, so two special county meetings at six o'clock at both events, on May the twenty-second and April the fourth.
Yes, thank you. Anything further on the O P reviews? And I think, you know, we agreed to have two of these meetings instead of one, and I think that's fantastic. I do thank everyone for putting one in the Uville, because I do think that it allows for Manabaska Valley and B L R, I think, you know, they'll be able to attend more easily than putting it in the southern end of the county. And I urge everybody to be there, not only for the County Council meeting, but if you could be there just as a show of support for our staff during the day as well. Thank you. Number eighteen, tariff of fees. And finally, number nineteen, the Algonquin Trail, Councilor Reed.
Just thank you, Warden. Just talking, our township is against the trail, so the whole matter of the issue was one portion of the trail that affects through a small hamlet, and the complaints and concerns of some residents. Truthfully, my term on council at Headclere Mariah, up until the meeting that was held a week ago, where we did have representation of staff and council staff, I didn't have a clue. Okay, and I know in my heart of hearts that information was given at county that wasn't coming back to us, and vice versa. I spoke to the clerk, we were trying to meet with the trail operator locally to get this resolved, we don't want to go on any longer. We've already planned to support the other side of the trail, we want to get involved with, we heard that possibly the Voyager, Ice Wing is coming through. But this time, I'll take this document back to our township and see where it goes from there. I don't think it needs to be a fight between the counties and us, or us and the county. I think it's something that's going to be worked out between the trail and the people involved, and I'm sure that the Smallville Club would meet and agree in terms that those people could abide by, that this issue would go away. But I can't say that, I'm only the head of council, and I do what I'm asked to do. So hopefully in the future, we can get over this and get along with the trail. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, I see Councilor Stack.
I appreciate Mayor Reed's comments. I want to, you know, respond as passionately as I can, and the only way I know how to do it, and that's as honestly as I can, because I'm surprised to hear this today, that was not said when we were at Headclere Mariah. And I was left at the, left that meeting certainly feeling that there would be little value in continuing much discussion with the township of Headclere Mariah, because they made me mind up, and, you know, even to the point I noticed that night, that council didn't take their opportunity with their authority to even allow input from the audience that was there that night, and I was impressed by the number of people in the hall. But in my view, from my perception, I was sitting right next to it, the direction to not allow that more came from the C A O than certainly a decision of council. And, you know, in this morning's meetings, and Mayor Reed, you made a similar comment that night, and I'm going to repeat my response to you then. I understand you personally may not have been aware of some stuff, but it's not Brentford County's responsibility to ensure every resident and every municipality gets the information, it's their responsibility to feed that information through to the lower tiers, and they do that. I was at Chalk River when the first public meeting was held, and it was held up there intentionally to deal with that end of the county. And as Mayor Sweet has said a number of times, the former Mayor of Headclere Mariah was there, another member of council, another members of the community, I wouldn't know them because I just don't personally know them. And from that point of view, the responsibility to pass that on for the residents who were not participating that night, or in council, was their responsibility, not the county's. The same as it was in the other five sites across the county that we strategically chose so that we could spread the word and provide opportunity. You know, there's, I got to tell you, when I first heard about these objections, I was shocked. I thought Headclere Mariah, as ruler of communities it is, would be one of the strongest supporters of this opportunity and this development. And, you know, my seven, eight years in this committee now has been, you know, both exciting and pleasing, but as I said earlier today, it's, the economic development opportunity is horrendous for us in Brentford County. But it's not the only reason. To me, just as equally important, or maybe more so, is this is a development that's going to be a heritage thing, that we're going to be able to pass on to generations, to our grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and their grandchildren. And this has been a real opportunity for us to do this. My, you know, in terms of legal battle, Mayor Reed, I hope we can avoid that for sure, I don't think it's necessary, but my view, in terms of a committee member to this recommendation today, was that the amount should have been a hundred thousand dollars, and let's get it, and get it in the courts, and get it done. And I'm more than thrilled to hear that Lanard County has notified us that they're happy to participate in the two to fifty percent, and these legal costs resolve through that process, too. And if there's a way to avoid the legal thing, and we can get it going on, but I certainly feel as an A T A C Committee in the Brentford County Council, we have done everything we can to communicate the process, including to the meeting the other night, where I personally said that they have specific issues along that trail, with a certain part of it, come to the county staff, talk to them about it, and we'll do everything we can to work out some kind of solution. But I really did not leave, your meeting the other night, Mayor Reed, really feeling it was much valuable, and a whole lot of further discussion with your council to get, to make any progress.
Thank you, Councilor Emo.
Thank you. I have a lot of sympathy for you, Councilor Reed, I recognize this is probably not one of the more enjoyable things that you plan to do with your political career. I appreciate that. I should note that, you know, the, probably one of the primary needs of consultation for your community with the Committee and the county would be a review of the draft plan, the operation plan that's placed on your desk today. That will govern how the trail is operated and administered through your community and the rest of the communities along its length. So I think that's probably a, you know, a good starting point. I'm encouraged by your words about wanting to make this occur, and make this an unconflicted pattern as possible. I would suggest to you, though, that I think, you know, any, you know, the word discussion is, I think, is overused, because it's more of a consultation, given that the County of Brentford, as a corporation, owns the trail, the asset, and such will be managing it. But we are due now to consult, and to try and, you know, try and operate it as best we can, with due regard for the conditions. But it will be a consultation. I'm not sure, you know, I would venture beyond that word, it's, to me, it's not a discussion, to me, it's not a negotiation, it's a consultation, and we'll, you know, we'll make every effort to accommodate affordable conditions that as best meets the objectives of the management of the trail. In terms of information, I have had the opportunity to look at your minutes for the last couple of years, and I know that Counselor Gibson, Mayor Gibson, on several occasions, made comments about the, about the trail and the process. And in fact, kudos to him, because in the spring of last year, he appended to your council package, the information that he received at County Council, the full, the full presentation of lining the cost, the staging of the purchase, as well as the commitment to consult. And I think it was even the headline as to what that consultation would look like, as well as the, as well as the information around the formation of the plan and the possible community structures as well. So that is probably as complete a briefing as could be provided at that time, and was a commitment to continue to put out information as the plan evolved and developed. I think the council recognized, I think the committee recognized that there might be some slight changes in the, in the process, in the management plan that was going to be developed, and more than, you know, of the facility. So I'm hopeful, you know, that that reassures your community, the information was offered, and, you know, it may not have been, you know, maybe there could have been a better delivery of it in terms of expanding the information, but I think the core information was probably as much as we could do at the time, because we don't want to dictate how this is going to go. We all have, I think everybody in this chamber has a slight vision, or a slightly different vision than everybody else about how it would turn out. So I'm, as I say, I reassure you that your community wants to make this a success. And by my understanding correctly, you're already working on building a relationship for cap on camera for that section, if that's how I understood it, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Councilor Reed.
Yeah, just to clarify, I think our council in general, the point where we want to get past it, we want to have behind us, like I said, we are going to try and meet with the organization of the club, get the problem resolved. It's not so much the trail that was the problem, it was the fact that maybe they started using the trail, assuming they had the permission a year at a time, and maybe that's where the confusion came. But I'm not going to deal with it one way or the other, I'm new in the position. Part of the information that came forward, maybe it did, maybe it didn't, I don't personally remember, but we just want to move forward from here. I don't think we need to make a knock. I don't think we need to make a knock out of a fight to get it done. And hopefully, the next few weeks to come that it's done, we'll move on to Mayor.
Counselor Sweet.
Yeah, Counselor Reed made a comment that was, that we're using the trail. Who was using the trail? Could you articulate that?
Yeah, Missing Link actually used the trail almost a year prior to what we used to apply.
Maybe I could help you out with that one. That was a request that was made and brought forward to the county of Redford. And I'll just read to you the request that the Development and property committee recommends the county council of the county of Redford enter into a short-term lease with Missing Link Snowmobile Club and Snow Country Snowmobile Association for a period of five months from December of 2016 to 2017. This came as a result of Mayor Gibson requesting that to take place. In fact, we have the AU Trail Route, Re-Route Proposal, and all of the information was in it. And the proposal was to route the A Trail, better known as the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail, owned by Lannard, Redford, Papun, Cameran, the new route would go through Pine Valley Road. And I don't know these facilities, but you would, to Yates Road in the west. It would use two very short sections of the municipal road, Pine Valley Road in the east, and Yates Road in the west. So we accommodated the request from Mr. Mayor Gibson at the time. And it was put into a lease proposal and forwarded and presumably signed by Headclare Mariah. So it is a little confusing for us to perhaps sit here and understand that there's a consultation lacking in this whole process. This was a request to us. And in fact, I recall in this chamber because of the very, very, very popular, I suppose, snowmobile trip, or is the rapture around our own parts, that in fact, the gentleman up in Headclare Mariah where the trail went through decided that his farm was no longer going to be used for the rapture. And in fact, that could have jeopardized the continuity of the trail. And would we at the county of Redford be interested in allowing the trail to go onto the CP railway? We said absolutely, and that's as a result of what happened. As a request from Mayor Gibson, we did that, and the rapture was still in place. It's not something we forced on anyone, it was a request coming from Headclare Mariah. I don't know whether you're aware of that or not, but it's not, that's the history behind it. We complied with what was asked of us and moving forward. I can say too, it is not, it's not in our manner to take on another member or another community in a legal fight. That's not the way we do things. But this has been sort of pressured with some of the stuff that we see here coming forward. We don't want to get into that, we really don't. But we want to see this move forward, we spent hours on this, hours making this a reality. And as Walter said, this is a legacy issue. The largest single purchase that I think Redford County has ever made, $77 million to put this project in place. You saw earlier today about the economic opportunities of tourism. We see this as the backbone for a huge opportunity for eastern Ontario and in fact, Redford County to bring people up in here, force this multi-purpose trail environment. We've said that from day one and we'll continue to say so. So it's not in our nature to take on another municipality, but, you know, what has been presented, it kind of leads us with the situation where we have to take a look at where we have to go as far as the legal situation is concerned so that we can in fact use the trail the way it was set up and the vision that was set up by county council. Oh, I'm saying, 10, 12 years ago.
Thank you. Counselor Eemo and then Counselor Doncaster.
Just a quick addition, the copy of that correspondence by Counselor Reed's mayor at the time was copied back to the Snowmobile Club and to Headclare Mariah's whole office. It was received by my CIO, because I think if I remember correctly, there's an email trail outlining the competency, knowledge of that correspondence. And then secondly, what I see as a positive congratulatory tone in the email back to us. So I think the information has been sent and may not be recalled, maybe it was not filed as well as it could be. But we do have that, I have that comfort that I have to give back.
Counselor Doncaster.
Thank you. Just a, I feel like a different, one of the items that I see involved here is with respect to funding for potential bypasses that was put into the, put into the trail. We saw in this cycle of meetings that there was a significant amount of funds applied for by the county and by, I believe, what was stated as nine municipalities. So my question was, was Headclare Mariah one of the nine municipalities that got funding available for the trail?
It's my understanding that they didn't apply, but perhaps Counselor Reed would, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly?
Through you, Warden, they were asked at the same time all the municipalities were, and they turned down an offer to assist them in application.
Counselor Reed, did you have something further? Counselor Stack?
Yeah, again, you know, I'd encourage that Mayor Reed, so I'm gonna stay and try, hopefully, we can avoid the legal issue. But the fact is that we're in possession of the first legal opinion that's been put to this and was done by Headclare Mariah and sent to us as a legal statement. Basically stating we couldn't do what we wanted to do in that area. So unless there was another document offset that in some way, I think that, you know, in the near regard, Mr. Other Municipalities, and we need to deal with this issue once and for all. So I think we should still get a firm legal opinion of our position as we go forward. But again, the first legal action taken and aware that was consulted was in Headclare Mariah.
All right, anything further, Counselor Eemo?
Sorry, I forgot, and I'll shout about this, I hold. To, this is a question to Mr. Hutton, based on his planning background. I understand one of the things that has confused me a little bit is our, our understanding that there doesn't need to be specific zoning for the trail that's different. And the question would be, I am getting to understand there are two or more trails within Headclare Mariah. Do they have different zoning as well, and would that cause them problems in the future?
Thank you, Counselor Eemo. In response to your question on planning, our recommendation and advice is totally different, a lot different than Headclare Mariah's recommendation and advice. I think that's been clear in some of the correspondences that have been exchanged. So in terms of, we have no issue, our opinion of official plan, official policy statement is only valid. I understand, knowing Headclare Mariah fairly well, that there have been snowmobile trails, leases in Headclare Mariah for a number of years. And also there are other trails in Headclare Mariah for a number of years. So this is, that's, you know, certainly where we're coming from. I'm CIO, I can encourage as well by what I hear tonight. But you asked me about that, my planning opinion, and that's what I stated. Counselor Eemo, thank you.
Apparently, Mr. Hutton thinks it's already nighttime. I too have been encouraged by Counselor Reed's comments, but I do agree with Counselor Stack that because Headclare Mariah already obtained a legal opinion, that it's incumbent upon us to obtain one as well. Just for our own notification. Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. This has been a very interesting discussion. I'm glad for having this discussion. I was somewhat out of loop when I'm getting this information directly to my own email and through the township. It does seem like there was perhaps at somewhere, there was a breakdown in the communications. And I'm wondering if it's, if council in Headclare Mariah, it seems with respect to the lease arrangement that was arrived after 2016, 2017, it seems that Counselor Reed has expressed that they were unaware of that. So I'm not sure that the information to the council, there's somewhere there's been a breakdown. And I'm wondering if that could be provided to Counselor Reed, some of those communications, directly for him to take to his council. Because it seems to me that all was essentially in the court of Headclare Mariah. As has been expressed here, a legal opinion was rendered to us here at the county that it would certainly be us to address that because we in the county are of a completely different viewpoint and have expressed saying to Headclare Mariah consistently. So if now it has been elevated to a legal opinion, then I think it absolutely is the responsible thing to do in the absence of any further correspondence from Headclare Mariah of rescinding this, that the county must get a legal opinion.
Thank you. I think in your package, Counselor Reed, you do have the majority of the correspondence that went back and forth. So if you want to review it and take that back to your council, thank you. Anything further? The report as a whole. Can I get a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you, all those in favor, opposed if any. Thank you, and we'll break for lunch. Does everybody want half an hour? We need about a quarter to one? Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, I hope you enjoyed lunch. I would like to say that. And we will continue on with our reports. I'll turn this over to Counselor Busnisky Moore for our Health Committee.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The members of county council, leader Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, resident's population. Number two is the LIN network waitlist information. Three is community paramedicine. Three is the DEFID program update. Emergency management, number five. Number six is the organ donation proposal. Seven is the annual occupancy wire drill. Eight, the Boncher Manor auxiliary fundraising. And of course, both the Manor and the Lodge are always working so hard, the accelerators, they raise a lot of money for our residents. Number nine is the air conditioning compressor failure at the Lodge. Again, number 10 is the foundation update. Resolution. Resolution number HCC 180102, moved by the chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved the reclassification and name change of the Boncher Manor Community Relations Coordinator to Fundraising Coordinator from Group Four to Group Two. Of employment by law, number one, non-union staff salary grid effective January 1st, 2018. Number 12, resolution number HCC 180103, moved by the chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved the submission of the community accountability planning submission caps for 2018-19 to the LIN for the continuation of 100% funding from the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care for the senior add-on D program services. Number 13, resolution number HCC 180111, moved by the chair, seconded by committee. The county council support the following resolution. Whereas the county of Redford received a report of the Minister's Expert Panel on Public Health, public health within an integrated health system. And whereas the county, or the council for the county of Redford has significant concerns regarding the recommendations of the Expert Panel to integrate a calculation health approach into local planning and service delivery. And whereas there is an apparent lack of empirical evidence based upon which the recommendations are founded, whereas the current mandate of public health to prevent disease, protect, and promote health should remain unchanged. And whereas public health must remain distinct from acute care health services on the LINs in terms of role, funding, governance, and accountability in order for public health to focus on a more upstream approach, the causes of poor health of the social determinants of health. And whereas the important linkage is with local communities for programming, understanding local needs, and leveraging these partnerships will be undermined. And whereas recentalization of public health units with centralized decision-making will have significant negative consequences for local public health and municipalities. Less municipal representation, 400 Board of Health members reduced to approximately 180, and loss of local voice in governing and directing public health programs and services to understand and meet the needs of our communities. Substantial delays in responding to local program and service needs, especially during emergencies, adding another layer of bureaucracy resulting in increased costs and inefficiencies. Governance structure will not be flexible enough to meet, adjust, respond to local needs, and negatively impact vulnerable priority populations. Potential loss of important local services fundamental to day-to-day public health operations and efficiencies. Example, corporate services, finance, planning and evaluation, communications, IT, et cetera. Key positions, chair, vice chair, finance, et cetera, on regional boards of health should not be appointed. Orders the council to avoid political interference and inputs. And whereas the current cost share, provincial municipal funding for N7525 will not support the implementation of the proposed recommendations. And whereas, LIN boundaries should be reconfigured to align with municipal, local, public health, education, and social service boundaries to support their relationships with local public health and population health and healthcare system planning. And whereas, public health cannot be integrated into the healthcare system without a significant system disruption, enormous cost, and risk of eroding community value, public health programs and services that would result in the implementation of the Expert Panel's recommendations. Now, therefore be it resolved that the county of Redford does not support the recommendations of the Expert Panel and is in agreement with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, urging the Minister of Health and Long Term Care, Dr. Eric Hostins, not to adopt. That's got to be written by Peter and Michael.
Do you want to get it? I've never had that. No, you can do that. You just change the can.
Resolution number 14, resolution number HCC 180150, moved by the chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved the memorandum of understanding agreed upon with the Canadian Union of Public Employees, QP Local 1508 of Boncher Manor, on January 9th, 2018. Bail law. Resolution number HCC 180104, moved by the chair, seconded by committee. The county council adopted bail law at this session, authorizing the Warden and the CIO slash clerk to sign the lease agreement between the county of Redford, Boncher Manor, and St. Paul's Anglican Church, parish of Stafford, Whitewater, Deanery of Pembroke, for the use of leased space on 37 Crawford Street, Cawton, Ontario. And that bail law was put on the gas tonight, today.
I'm as bad as Jim. Long day.
It's been a long day. All with due respect, always submitted by myself as chair, committee members, Doncaster, Donahue, Love, Murphy, Kingsbury, and Reed.
Thank you. Information item number one. Two, LIN. Three, the community paramedicine. Four, DEFID program. Five, the emergency management. Six, organ donation. Seven, vulnerable occupancy. Eight, the Boncher Manor Foundation. Nine, the air conditioning failure. Ten, the Mere Machine Lodge Foundation. Resolutions, the Boncher Manor Foundation. Number 12, the accountability planning. Number 13, the Board of Health. Do you want me to read that resolution once more so that everybody gets it?
If they want.
So I see Counselor Busnisky Moore and then Counselor Eemo.
I just want to, I hope that county council will support this as part of the Health Committee. We've been working really hard, the Board of Health, on the Expert Panel. And of course, it's written quite clearly in the motion and negative effects that if those it's written quite clearly in the motion and negative effects that if those recommendations from that panel are adopted. So we've been citing this for as long as it's been out, and the Board of Health continues to be very proactive and trying to convince the Minister that all those points and recommendations are not in the best interest of the people of Redford County and the people of Ontario.
Thank you for that very well said explanation. Counselor Emo.
Yes, thank you. Although I agree with the idea, if you want to take it, why not use both sides of it for a motion? I like this motion. It's not as long as it should be, but... In all seriousness, though, my concern, I think if I could boil it down to a couple sentences, is that we have an example of the LIM right now, where we have a very large geographic body, supposedly membership. If you look, the most local member we have resides in Stittsville. I don't recall Stittsville being integrated in Redford in terms of being part of Redford County or Pembroke or Bear's Bay nor in Clermoraya for that matter. So I have some concerns about that, and as I've said to Minister Hoskins a couple of times, the only time we're going to see a board member from the LIM in Redford County is if their car breaks down on the highway, they have to commit a rent line. So we will not be having that type of representation of the LIM anytime, anytime in the future, in the future. So I worry that this model, which is meant to support the LIM, and in fact, I think to establish credibility for it, but that's another story, I don't see it being of any benefit to us, so I'm hopeful that County Council will turn it down here and speak to it at any opportunity they have over the next 140, 50 days as we speed towards June 6th.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just to, I'm in absolute agreement with both Counselor Vissnuske more and Emo, my fellow members of the Board of Health. One more thing that I would like to add to that, though, is, so far as I understand, I think it's very universal rejection of this Expert Panel report. I know that has been the position of AHO, I know it has been the position of ALFA, which is the Association of Local Public Health Agencies. Within ALFA, there is also the Council of Medical Officers of Health, which are the actual doctors. They have also resoundingly rejected this proposal. So I think that that one more voice added to this will continue to demonstrate that this is an inappropriate means of addressing issues within our community, and I certainly have grave concerns with respect to how our LIM board has evolved, as Counselor Emo has suggested, where even as Stittsville is now within the city Ottawa boundaries, in fact, a 12-member LIM board, there is only one that is not a resident of the city of Ottawa, and that person is from Castleman. So I am absolutely concerned that the issues that we may experience here in Redford County are given scant attention at best. And I think how these subregions are being rolled out, I have significant reservations with regards to that, too, with parts of Leonard being hived off and attached here, and in fact, a thoroughly non-contiguous portion of Leeds and Breville, which is the municipality surrounding Kempville, is also now part of our subregion, so you must drive through at least one other subregion before you can get to that part of our subregion. Our interests are not being served here, and I think the cautionary tale is certainly how the LIM has evolved from when it first was rolled out.
Thank you. And it would be my hope, much like other initiatives that we've put forward from the County of Redford, where we are saying that this just does not work in rural Ontario, and we deserve better, it would be my hope that the province would be listening right now as we head into an election. Not only the government that's sitting, but also both caucuses need to be aware that this just does not work for not only Redford County, but for rural Ontario as a whole. I see Counselor Vissnuske more and then Counselor Reinhold.
So on behalf of the Board, all the chairs of the Board of Health across Ontario were invited to a meeting, and it was all about the Expert Panel. There was only, so there was, I think, 32 chairs for this workshop, and only 31 of us said we didn't like it. And that's not just rural, that's urban. And the only municipality that said they liked some of it was one that had their MOH was sitting on the panel. So I guess they would look awful terrible if they would have opposed it when their MOH was part of the panel. So it's across Ontario, we really, a lot of, as I said, I believe it was, one of the urban centers, maybe it was Kason, I don't quote, they stood up and said, basically, we don't like any of it, and sat down. So, you know, there's lots of pushback, and as Counselor Donahue and Counselor Emo mentioned, the organizations that are associated and work with this document all have indicated they do not like it. So we do appreciate that County Council will consider supporting this, so we can add our voice among every other voice that it just doesn't work. It's scary stuff. One of the counselors, one of the chairs said that they tried this in England, and it almost bankrupted their health system, it did not work, and that the question was, did the province of Ontario look at what they did to see what went wrong? And so they were saying they were going to investigate that. But it's a scary document, and I really do appreciate if County Council will support it.
Interesting that the urban centers are against this as well, I would have never thought that. Counselor Reinhold?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to make a comment with regards to the importance of going forward with this resolution. I remember back a few months ago, it was, we had a situation with Social Services in Mr. Morrow's apartment where they were looking at reducing the numbers from the frontline staff in Ontario Works, and we pushed back on it, and we got resolution on it. So I was just hoping that Council would certainly think about that when they move forward on this resolution.
That was an excellent example to use, where we thought that through Counselor Robinson, that this idea of a call center for our most vulnerable occupants was just a non-starter for us, and sent a letter to Minister Jassik, and she was absolutely not in favor of the call center, and in fact, called it off. So I think that this is another example of where we need to make the changes, we need to tell the government that it just doesn't work for us, and again, no different than some of the amendments to Bill 148 with respect to our emergency responders. Is there anything else on the resolution? Counselor Pecat?
Thank you, Warden. I agree with Counselor Vissnuske more that this shouldn't go through, and it's not good for us. My question is, if the county votes to move this resolution forward, is there benefit that each of the municipalities also pass their own resolution to send to the Minister?
I believe there is. Counselor Vissnuske more?
I sent a letter to each municipality under my signature asking for support, and so I hope that all of you did. I sent a letter, yes.
We don't have our meetings home next week, so... Would there be added benefit in sending Dr. Hoskins a letter under the Warden's signature as well as we did with Minister Jassik? I recognize that resolutions are the way that we forward our concerns to the people in power in the province and the feds, but it also seems that a personal letter also is very important so that these resolutions aren't shelved by staff or bureaucrats and don't see the light of day. Counselor Emo?
Yes, thank you. That was a suggestion I was going to make, and I'm glad that you preempted me, and I'm sure Counselor Donahue will be glad to see you with it.
He's good at that.
He's the expert on that.
Counselor Donahue is taking a lot of flak today, my goodness.
All right, same with my peers.
With all your friends.
It was a compliment, he's worked very hard.
All right, anything further? Excellent discussion. Number 14, the Memorandum of Understanding. 15, the Adult Day Program, the lease. Counselor Vissnuske more?
Sorry, did I just go back to number 14?
No.
That stopped me in my tracks. But we will be going in camera and showing Bruce will be...
Excellent, because I'm sure that there's far more background. All right, the report as a whole. Can I get a mover, please?
So moved.
All those in favor, opposed if any. Excellent, and I will turn this over to Chair Robinson for the Social Services Report.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. I think Hoskins will not find this a little bit difficult. We, Social Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Number 1, making items the 2016-2017 Redford County Social Housing Registry Waitlist Statistics Comparison. Number two, the Child Care Statistics Comparison. The Integrated Coordination Statistics Comparison. And just so you know, when you look at the 2017, the act files being 165, but only 60 children receiving resource funding, just want to make sure people understand that the other 160 children are being supported, it's just not necessarily through funding, maybe co-branding different supports to the staff. Number three, the Ontario Works Case Close Statistics. Number four, the Ontario Early Years Child and Family Centers, who probably will never see that title again. As everyone knows, we are now going to be managing those sites across the county, there are six sites right now. They will now be called the Early On Centers, just because, it sounded like a good idea, I guess, to change the title, provide the province. We are in negotiations, we're having a hurry with the six early on sites in the county, and those contracts are expected to be finalized and signed by the end of this month. And a resolution is the Healthy Kids Community Challenge, and just to note that we are now in phase four, the fourth phase of the Healthy Kids Community Challenge, which is putting the producer in time for children. So resolution number SSCC 18-01-03, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that $25,000 of the Healthy Kids Community Challenge funding for the year three be allocated to the Redford County Local Health Unit for the year three program. And further, the $25,000 of the Healthy Kids Community Challenge funding for the year three be allocated to the Ottawa Valley Tours Association for 2018 Ottawa Valley Road Maps and 2018 Summer Passport Challenge. Background is there, those two are very exciting programs, extremely successful in the county. Number six, letter of support for the Grind Pembroke. Resolution number SSCC-18-01-07, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that the County of Redford submit a letter of support to the Grind Pembroke of the County Council at the Ontario Works program. The bylaws, as you know, is helping a lot of people in the community, most of them are vulnerable people, some people are homeless, they're looking at all kinds of ways to improve their funding, and applying for grants, including Troy, and our letter of support will certainly help their cause. Bylaw. Number seven, amendment to bylaw 122-17 to add Bonshaw, Auckland First Nations Early On Center. Resolution number SSCC 18-01-04, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that bylaw 122-17 be a bylaw to authorize the County of Redford enter into a service agreement with agencies to operate early on centers be amended to include the Bonshaw, Auckland First Nation. Number eight, the 2018 Journey Together Funding Agreement. Resolution number SSCC-18-01-05, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that a bylaw be adopted to authorize the Warden and Clerk to enter into a funding agreement with the Bonshaw, Auckland First Nation for one start-up, one-time start-up funding in the amount of $80,000. Number nine, Low Income Energy Assistance Program Memorandum of Understanding Renewal. Resolution number SSCC-18-01-06, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that a bylaw be adopted to authorize the County of Redford Ontario Works program to enter into a one-year renewal, memorandum of understanding, excuse me, with the United Way, Simpom, Spoka, for the delivery of Low Income Energy Assistance Program, Lee, from January 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2018. All of which is respectfully submitted, signed by myself as Chair and committee members Emo, Carr, Kelly, Murphy, Reed, Reinhold and Scott.
Thank you. All right, we'll move back to information item number one. Number two. Number three, the case close for OW. Number four, Ontario Early Years. Resolutions, the Healthy Kids. Number five, letter of support, oh, sorry, number six, letter of support for the Grind. Number seven, the amendment for the First Nations for early on. Number eight, the Journey Together Funding. And number nine, the Low Income Energy Assistance Program. The report as a whole. Can I get a mover, please? Thank you. All those in favor, opposed if any. Excellent. And now I will turn this over to Counselor Donahue, the Chair of the Striking Committee.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Members of County Council, we here Striking Committee wish to recommend as follows. Number one is a bylaw to establish the County Committees for the ensuing year. You will note from the background that there was an omission at the time that we did this at the inaugural meeting in December. Resolution number STCC 18-01-03, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that Counselor Robert Reed be appointed to the Health Committee and Social Services Committee effective January 1st, 2018, and further, that bylaw number 1-18 be repealed and replaced with a revised bylaw to appoint the County Committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed, to be adopted at the January 31st, 2018, meeting of County Council. And I wish to express behalf of the committee, and certainly from myself to Counselor Reed, this oversight, it is incumbent upon me as Chair to ensure that any of the report that I bring forward to Council is accurate, so I sincerely do apologize predominantly on behalf, on my own behalf, but certainly on behalf of the committee. Item number two, as with expected, Chalk River Lordorries Environmental Stewardship Council. Resolution number STCC 18-01-04, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that the name of the Canadian Nuclear Lordorries Environmental Stewardship Council ad hoc committee be changed to the Chalk River Lordorries Environmental Stewardship Council effective immediately, and further, that a revised bylaw to appoint the County Committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed, be adopted at the January 31st, 2018 meeting of County Council. The full listing, full report of Striking Committee and the appropriate positions for each of the County Councilors and the agencies and committees that they sit on is attached. There are only those changes, so all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Doncaster, Farr, Love, Murphy and Sweet.
Thank you. And we'll go back to the bylaw number one. Any concerns? Again, Counselor Reed, apologies for the oversight. Any concerns, questions about number two? The report as a whole. Counselor Kingsbury?
Yeah, if you could just back up, switch here. If we go down and look under the Health Committee, it has with responsibility for the Board of Health. In talking with you, Madam Warden, and talking with the Chair of the Health Committee, I find that we don't have any responsibility for the Board of Health, in so much that we don't give any direction to them. They give us a report of what you receive every year, and that pretty much covers it. So I'm wondering if responsibility should be replaced with a...
Interesting. Mr. Hutton?
Thank you, and thanks for the point, Counselor Kingsbury. I will just add that the responsibility for us to rip the bylaw for other committees that we don't have responsibility for, and wasn't in the responsibility for, is actually reporting responsibility to the committee. That's what is intended by it, if I do take your point. We're certainly not responsible for those, neither are we responsible for the Ministry of National Resources, Forest Management, and so it's meant to, responsible for reporting relationship through Health Committee or the, or the other committees, all that down there. It's something we can take into account in the future if we get that direction.
Interesting point, though. The report as a whole. All those in favor, opposed if any? All is in favour, opposed if any? Thank you, and we'll move on to bylaws. Who's got bylaws? Hello councillor Busnuski more.
Good afternoon, madam Wharton. Moved by myself, seconded by Tom Pegget, that the bylaws listed an item allowing and attached hereto as Schedule 8 on the county council agenda, dated January 31st, 2018, a deemed read three times and passed.
Thank you for the resolution, and you see the bylaws in front of you. Any concerns, errors or missions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favour, opposed if any. Thank you. And now I am pleased that I have a notice of motion. Need the glasses, Bill? Moved by councillor Kingsbury, seconded by councillor Love, that councillor Pegget be appointed deputy warden for 2018, ending on December 18th, 2018 inaugural meeting of council. Any concerns, questions? I'll call, oh, yes councillor Emo.
More clarification, still two or we have the three?
Number one.
One? Oh, okay, perfect.
I think, I think the intention of having two last year was Canada 150. And I think that Tom's got this. Councillor Adams, sir.
Thank you Wharton. No doubt that councillor Pegget was not capable of doing the job, or just actually wanted to know what the job entails. Because last year I understood you were doing it because of the 150, and demands are going to be on your time, hopefully I get to follow those demands. I just want to know what the role and the responsibility is for this.
Once again, I believe that this is a ceremonial position, that if I wasn't able to make two events because I can't clone myself, and I'm sure Peter felt this way, and every warden before, that councillor Pegget will be available to go in my stead so that the county of Renfrew was represented. Councillor Emo.
I believe, I certainly, madam, while I was sitting in that chair, of the description and the expectations, I would assume that this is just a continuation of that initial, that initial descriptor, but I don't know for sure.
Councillor Busnuski more, Jim's got a thing here, if you want to hang on.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to ask me a warden for you to counsel response to councillor Robinson's question. Proceed your bylaw, read this clause 1701B. Any questions by the warden, the deputy warden, shall represent the warden as her own functions or effects, which matches what the warden said. I just want to make your...
Councillor Busnuski more.
So I've been the deputy warden, I think twice. And it, warden Murphy called me this past year. I did two things for her, so she was double booked, triple booked, those kind of things. So then she asked me to represent her two different things. So it's not a lot, but when she, when I was the warden, sometimes we'd get five invitations for the day. So then you were left kind of, and everybody was very insulted if the warden didn't come. So I think with the 150, we were really worried that she'd be overbooked many, many times, and we'd have to need, you know, Kim or I to assist her in representing the county because it is an important function, and everybody should feel like we are there to support them. And she canceled herself, so that it wasn't often. But when I was the warden, I would have to count on the mayor of that town or something to go in my stead. But we carried her message, so, you know, the deputy carries the message of the warden of the day.
And it really is, it's, it's so hard because you do take the invitations that come first. And when you have multiple invitations on one day, and you know that you can't make it to all of them, it is very nice to know that you have somebody that's going to go as the deputy warden, so that those people recognize that they are as important to the county as anybody else, that they just didn't, their invitation came a little too late. So councillor Stapp, do you have something? Okay.
I remember the required vote for that, and I was really undecided then, and because of the 150th, I swayed with it. But I thought this whole thing was for, last year for the 150th. I didn't, in my mind, I didn't think it was going to be an ongoing situation. I hear the explanation today.
I was quite so, I was here before too, and I wasn't that much.
Yeah, but I just, you know, I just lost it and that, so that's why I was sitting here, which you mentioned two times last year.
It was my understanding, under, when Peter was the warden, I mean, James, you really only got a year and a half because it was, it was quite late. But, and then for 150, we agreed that two might be acceptable. But then, now that it's not the 150, I believe one deputy as a backup is absolutely fine. I don't think two are necessary. Anything further? The report as a whole. Oh, councillor Ryan Wald.
Thank you madam Wharton. I think that you've chosen a very good individual for, for the position. But I just wish you had a lot of someone a little cuter.
Like you?
I think he's trying to nominate himself. Are we allowed to say cuter anymore?
He is, but we better not say it.
Exactly. All right, you've heard the resolution, all is in favour, opposed if any? Thank you. All right, we have no written motions, any new business? Councillor Donahue.
Thank you madam Wharton. I just wanted to remind everyone, I'm sure they are aware, that today is Bell Let's Talk Day. And I think this is a fantastic initiative that Bell has got behind, which is to embrace and engage on mental health issues in our community. And I do note that for every text that is sent today, Bell is providing a certain amount of money. So I think it is incumbent upon not just council, and staff, media, anyone sitting in the gallery, staff and/or otherwise, to embrace this initiative. I think Bell has to be commended for this outstanding initiative, and we should participate and leverage as many dollars that can be devoted towards this. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And as my councillor that is championing this, and will hear this from her, I believe, next, even next month at county council, she would like to see not only Bell Let's Talk, but Bell Let's Act. And I think that that's a very important message. I think Peter is funding the entire mental health initiative all on his own today with his tax. Good for you, Peter. No, I thank you for your comments councillor Donahue. I think it's a very, very important initiative, and, and something, thank God, that we're talking more and more about. We're trying to de-stigmatize mental illness, and this is certainly one of the ways to do it. So thank you for your comments. Any other new business? Seeing none, we do have a closed session. It is to go into opposed...
Labor relations, madam Wharton.
For post-repairing acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality and labor relations or employee negotiations. So I will ask for a mover and a seconder. Councillor Busnuski more, councillor Pegget. My goodness, this is getting bad. We'll just give the, all of those in favour? Excellent, we'll just give the media a moment to collect their belongings.